We're going to begin this webinar right now. It's now exactly seven o'clock and we expect others to join us as they can. My name is Marilyn Varday and I'm a founding member of the Good Neighbor Steering Committee and I will be serving as host tonight for this evening's GNSC Candidates Forum. I welcome each of our candidates for Mayor Christina Strawbridge and Steve Young and for City Council Tom Campbell, Trevor McKenzie and Terry Scott. And I welcome the public attending, all of you who take a great interest in our town. Thank you all for your participation. This forum was created independently by the Good Neighbor Steering Committee without any financial donation or other support from any outside source, individual, commercial or corporate. First, a word or two about the Good Neighbor Steering Committee's long history as a citizen's environmental watch group. A number of us founded the original group in 2000 when Valero purchased the Benicia refinery from ExxonMobil. Of that momentous ownership change, we said then, "A cloud of uncertainty is hanging over Benicia." We feel this uncertainty hanging over us now, 20 years later. Over 20 active years, our credibility has been earned by our persistent commitment to fact-finding and asking pertinent questions and to evidence-based persuasion and advocacy on behalf of the community for public health and safety and for a healthy environment. We've met many challenges. For the record, over the years, our members have participated in establishing the city's first Benicia Community Sustainability Commission as well as the city's climate action plan. In 2003, we commented and legally challenged the EIR for the refinery's decades-long Valero Improvement Project, we refer to as VIP. In 2009, when Valero proposed further changes to their facility under the EIR, we went to bat to challenge their EIR addendum on procedural as well as substantive grounds. As a result, with pro bono legal counsel provided by local land use attorney Dana Dean, we negotiated a settlement agreement with Valero that provided approximately $14 million for environmental projects that support water and energy savings benefiting both the city and the community. In 2010, the city of Benicia became a party to the amended agreement, at which time, with dedicated settlement funds, the closed Mills Elementary School was transformed into Benicia Community Center. GNSC members have addressed various major planning and development proposals. From 2013 to 2016, we actively participated with Benetians for a Safe and Healthy Community to challenge and defeat Valero's proposed crude-by-rail project. Most recently, we initiated a second amendment to the settlement agreement that, as adopted, reallocated $1.4 million to four major projects selected by the GNSC for funding, including the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program for which a nonprofit has recently been established. This is the first time, though, that we're attempting, for the sake of public education, to host a Candidates Forum to spotlight certain issues of concern to the public regarding the future of our city, climate change, and the cities and communities' relationship to the refinery. I'm going to go over the protocols for the webinar. The webinar format we've chosen will not include interaction with the viewing audience or with me. This is not a debate. We've asked candidates to frame their answers to stand alone, representing their own thoughts on a topic. A candidate may refer to another's response, but not in the form of a rebuttal or rejoinder to anyone else's comments. As host, I will ask each candidate to respond to each question with an order established alphabetically. We will begin with mayoral candidates first and council candidates second. To be fair, I will rotate the order so that with each question posed, a different candidate will go first. All questions were drafted by the GNSC. All candidates and only the candidates were sent the questions in advance with background information for context. This was done to allow the candidates to study and prepare for tonight's forum. In the interest of time, I will not be reading the background info provided, but I will be announcing the topic areas for each question. Each candidate will have up to three minutes to answer and our co-host Constance Butel will be monitoring the time. She will be either raising a sign or saying 30 seconds, please. The GNSC members and the webinar attendees will appreciate succinct and clear answers. We hope this evening's forum will be educational for the candidates and the viewing public alike. For the public's benefit, because we are especially concerned in this forum to discuss the cities and communities' health, safety, and our future in relation to the Valero refinery, we thought it important and appropriate to remind candidates of the Conflict of Interest Rules and Advisories under the Political Reform Act dated August 2015 that is under jurisdiction of the state of California's Fair Political Practices Commission. I'm sure you're all aware. The Political Reform Act is for public interest. The Political Reform Act applies to all elected appointed officials and employees working for government at every level. The act states, and I quote, "In order to prevent a conflict of interest, a public official should, one, identify and fully disclose the financial interests that may cause a conflict; two, understand the different types of financial interests that may be the basis for a conflict; and, three, consider whether the decisions affect on the official's financial interests is reasonably foreseeable and material." The act details these precautions. According to the FPPC, the act relies, and I think this is important, the act relies on individual citizens to monitor the decision-making of the elected and appointed representatives to identify whether they have a conflict of interest with respect to a specific decision. Much of the enforcement of the act's conflict of interest provision is based on citizens' complaints. In other words, you know, these are things that I would say help democracy, help people to be paying attention to their electeds. If elected, a key question is whether you would declare any conflict of interest, including perceived conflict of interest, in any decision-making that would specifically involve the Valero refinery. The public needs to know. And I'm not posing that question to any of you, I'm just stating that that is of interest. Topic area one. Air quality and PM2.5, and that's particulate matter at 2.5 microns, or let's say PM2.5 or less, smaller. So here's question number one, and the first question goes to Christina. Because acute and chronic exposure to PM2.5 is a serious health risk, especially for children with developing lungs, the elderly, and people with pre-existing health conditions, what responsibility will you take as an elected official to ensure that Benetians are well-informed of the multiple health risks associated to chronic exposures to toxic air pollution, including PM2.5?
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to thank the Good Neighbor Steering Committee for putting on this forum and also their work through the years. It's made an incredible difference within our community, especially with education and all the things that have been able to be implemented through the settlement that happened several years ago. I believe in the safety of our residents and that is a top priority. I believe that we have taken on a number of things, just specifically that Marilyn mentioned, in the final settlement with the Good Neighbor Steering Committee and Valero, $1.5 million. Besides the air monitoring equipment, maintenance service, and the air monitoring program, we have the Air Watch Bay Area, the Integrated Water Management Plan Consultant, implementation of Integrated Water Management Plan, Sustainable Solano, and these are very, very important in the whole direction of our city. We, I believe that communication and education is essential to let our folks know that live here what they're up against. And, you know, you point out the PM2.5, and I did go and Google it. There's a lot of information that you can find, but it also doesn't really have a number of the things that we really need as far as communication. We have done a better job. We are communicating better with Valero. It needs to improve, and I think that we are on the right course with that communication, communication, education. There are a number of things now, I think, with the fires, the wildfires, the fires that are surrounding us, that are making people much more aware of air quality. And I know my husband, who's not really into air monitoring and stuff, but he's on Purple Air probably every 15 minutes, just checking, see if he can go outside. You know, it's, I think that the wildfires, even though they're tragic, but they are bringing a lot more awareness to our community about what it means to our health and to our children's health, and all of that is essential. So I, as an elected council member, will continue to be very, very concerned and very aware and work with Good Neighbor Steering Committee, our Sustainability Commission, in looking at all different ways to make sure that our citizens are safe.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, and I want to echo what Christina said about the good works that the Good Neighbor Steering Committee has done in the community and continues to do. I think inherent in the question is the larger issue of climate change. I think we all agree that climate change is real, that it's really what's causing these extensive and increasing numbers of fires. Unfortunately, the fires are not only going to continue, but they're probably going to get worse. And so there is a, and it's the fires themselves and the smoke from the fires that's, I think, one of the things that we want to focus on, at least in this question. The question of how to alert people as to what's going on is really something that should not be that difficult. Alert Solano, for example, is an important asset, but they don't really deal with this type of pollution. And I think it could certainly be a suggestion to Alert Solano to add to their warning system when the air quality gets above a certain number, say 100. Christina mentioned Purple Air. I use a thing called Air Care. It's the same kind of a thing. There's no reason the city itself should not put on its website a constant reading of what the air quality is using either one of those platforms and a explanation of what that means. What does it mean when the air quality is 100 or 150 in terms of what you as a citizen should be aware of? Not to go outside and exercise, to exercise extreme caution above certain levels. I think those are simple things that the city can do to provide that kind of information to the community. And the other thing that's connected to wildfires is, and this is though on a statewide basis, so it's not specific to Benicia, but we're allowing cities and communities are allowing development to happen in what's called the urban wildlife interface. They're allowing development to go out further and further into the woods and then with the expectation that should there be a problem, the taxpayers, of course, are going to be there and going to protect their homes. And we do, the fire departments go out and that's their first priority is to protect...
30 seconds.
So I think we need to talk to our state representatives about perhaps some limitations on the extent of development in the urban wildlife interface. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we'll call on, in alphabetical order, our council candidates, Tom Campbell.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk here. And first I want to talk about exactly why is 2.5 micron particle dangerous? And it's really pretty straightforward. You know, we don't have any protection, this is a human, as far as it goes, it goes through our nose without any problem. Sinuses can't stop it, gets into our lungs, it can't stop it, the ceiling, our lungs can't stop it, and it could go, and it does go straight into our blood system. And that right off the bat is a problem. We have basically not evolved a way to protect ourselves from this kind of potential assault on us. And it's also, because it's so small, it can create odd interactions with other chemicals, other organic chemicals, and as a result, you do not know what you're inhaling. When you inhale it, you think, well, it's a little piece of dust, a little piece from fire that is soot. It is not necessarily that case. It could be any number of little chemical cocktails which you are inhaling with each one of these particles. So it's incredibly risky things when you're talking about 2.5 micron particles. And we have, in the last two years, we've had these horrendous fires. The recent, you know, record was 14 continuous days this year. Well, we just shattered it. It was 30 days, 30 days, more than double that over the last, you know, month. So it's highly dangerous. Now, I heard brought up Purple Air. I love these Purple Air monitors. I bought one of these things, I think they're the greatest thing in the world. One of the things which, you know, should be considered, because we're trying to get information out to the public about these hazards that you can't really see, you can't smell, and they're incredibly dangerous, is maybe the Good Neighbor Steering Committee should take a little bit of that money they have and subsidize a number of Purple Air monitors being bought in the city. They're already all over the city, but you need to nail them down to neighborhoods so that neighborhoods know what they have. Like, for example, today, the readings were over 170. That's hazardous air. If it gets over 200, that's hazardous air to everybody over 24-hour period. And you need to get this information out, and the best way to get the information out is to, you know, various forms of community air monitors. Purple Air is one. You know, the air monitors that also pick up all the other organic compounds need to be embedded in our community, and that's another, you know, source of ways, you know, to get the information out there. This is something that needs to be...
30 seconds.
Okay, this is something which really, really needs to be brought forward and now, you know, so not just particle monitors, but also monitors to check for various chemicals that we breathe.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, Trevor McKenzie, let me say your name properly.
It's all right, nobody gets it. Misowski, it's fine.
Okay, that's good. Sorry.
Just to kind of hit on the topic of the question, first and foremost, the evaluation of health risk exposure has come forward within the kind of atmospheric and planning community, probably over the last five or six years. Obviously, point source evaluations related to stack modeling has been in place for a long time, in accordance with the plan you're...
Could you speak up a little bit, Trevor? I can't hear you too well. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me all right? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. The implementation of guidance surrounding how to evaluate health risk within communities is, I don't want to say a new science, but it's actually finding its way into our municipal and approval process within the last five or six years. In 2016, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District actually came out with guidance that's called New Source Review Health Risk Assessment Guidelines for How to Evaluate Health Implications on Communities. And there's two functional things you need to know about. One is to evaluate health risk at kind of a project and approval level. So you have something new that comes into your community and you want to determine what the implications of that risk are going to be on your constituents or the community itself. Now, when you do that, you identify the source in both a short-term and/or a long-term exposure potential. So you can look at construction-level health risk assessments, which oftentimes evaluate what a lot of other folks have talked about here, which is particulates that are disturbed, usually in like a dust-based particle for a short period of time. But usually, health risk, depending upon the constituent, is evaluated on two types of timeframes. One is a 70-year exposure period, and that's for like a residential source or a sensitive use. And the second is actually a 30-year exposure time for like a worker or construction. So when you're doing that, you can do it in both a construction timeframe, like I had mentioned, but you can also do it in a long-term operational or cumulative timeframe. Now, that cumulative exposure is important because that's where you actually start adding additional sources beyond just a one individual project, right? So in our community, for example, say you add the diesel particulate emissions associated with 780 and the vehicle traffic that actually traverses through our community, or the port operations and the prevailing wind pattern associated with that, or the refinery, or whatever this new project is. So the state actually in the last few years has implemented some guidance under SB 1000. So SB 1000 was a bill which required communities to evaluate and implement environmental justice evaluations. To do that, you have to identify these new sources of health risk which are established within a community as an inventory as part of your next general plan update process. So when we go through and we update our general plan, we will be able to cumulatively identify where those sources come to and are coming from in our community. And the last thing that I would just mention is just, the plan bay area also has an equity analysis that did it politically.
Thank you. We know you all could say a lot more and we're going, it's going to be a long, long evening, but this is educational and so I'm appreciative. Terry Scott?
Thank you. This has been an incredible learning experience for me. I'd like to start going back to the essence of the question, and the question is responsibility that I will take. So before I get to answering the question, I'd like to start with that climate change is real, it is the existential problem, threat to all of us. What we have experienced this summer with the wind, the fires up in California locally, just yesterday, the French Riviera reported 12 inches of rain in less than one evening, having massive mudslides, massive loss of life, just as climate change is moving through. Now more than ever, we all need to be environmentalists, and everyone that is watching this show, I'd like to believe, understands that we all need to be environmentalists. And just for everyone, I wanted to give the definition as defined by Merriam-Webster. What is the definition of an environmentalist? Supporting the goals of the environmental movement to improve and protect the quality of the natural environment through changes done through harmful and through harmful activities. If elected, it is my responsibility through ethical and political tools to ensure that we do embrace how we can solve today's problems and tomorrow's environmental problems. I will understandably have community engagement, understand how we are doing with the environment, enhance the coalitions, and so that we are not only talking for the people of Benicia, but we are talking about all peoples in the world. When we start talking about PM2.5, we, as we have heard from everyone here, we're just not talking local, this is a global issue. In researching for this discussion, I started looking at what the Indian government was doing. The Indian government is faced with, as a third-world country, of understanding what are the cooking fuels and how do the cooking fuels vapors react with various water droplets and get in, as Tom Campbell had noted, through various parts, you know, through the nose, through the mouth, et cetera. They're looking at a massive problem and a massive solution on how to be able to measure 2.5, PM2.5. So 2.5 is a difficult problem, but the biggest issue that we have right now is we can have the alerts, which I think Steve had a great idea, as well as Trevor, of understanding how we can measure this or how we can monitor it. The issue is how do we truly get that information out to the public? And I really do believe that the measurement aspect of it is the way that we are going to be able to communicate effectively with our local, our local folks. As a council member, I think it's my obligation, will be my obligation, to engage with Valero significantly and how to bring down the particulate matter and be able to bring awareness to this issue at every one of the junctures of the steps within the Good Neighbor Steering Committee's plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to topic area two, and this, this topic involves developing relations between the city of Benicia and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which we refer to as B.A.Q.M.D., involving community air monitoring and public health concerns, and a question about Valero's property tax assessment. So we're going to start for question two with Steve Young.
Marilyn, may I add that this is for five minutes?
Yes, no, not this one, Constance.
It's a four-part question.
Oh, yes, it is. I'm sorry, excuse me, you're absolutely right. We're giving everybody five minutes because there are four parts, and what I'm going to do is read each part to you separately so that we can distinguish between these parts. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Got it, so we'll go through each question.
Okay, yeah, so you don't have to remember all the, these parts, I will read them to you. Okay, Steve? Yes, you're, you're going to start.
Okay, so let me start with the air district portion, or do you want to read it?
No, 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 that was a topic area. I'm going to now read the questions. As an elected official, what actions would you take to ensure that the city Valero cooperation agreements terms are fulfilled to improve communication?
I was ready to talk about the air district.
This is, this is about the city's relationship to the air district plus about community health issues, monitoring, and the, the, sorry, if I didn't make that clear. It is about the cooperation agreement, the relation of the city to Valero.
So the cooperation agreement was put in place to address many of the issues that were hanging out as a part of the ISO proposal. And this, the council majority decided that they did not want to do an ISO and they were going to do this cooperation agreement instead. And I think it's fair to say that the cooperation agreement probably would not have come forward in the, in the shape that it did if not for the, the fact that an ISO was the alternative. And so when we signed the agreement, there were a number of good things in it. Valero agreed to pay for a division chief at the fire department who was going to be the liaison between the city and Valero. The city was going to set up a information bank that would include lots of information from Valero. They were going to add additional air monitors along their northwest fence line, and they were providing some mobile air monitors as well. All of those things were good. And then, of course, the, there was also a settlement, a financial settlement with the Good Neighbor Steering Committee. That was probably, what, a year ago, maybe? Things have not necessarily progressed a lot since then, some things did happen. We got the money for the division chief, the division chief was appointed, but then he retired three months later. And now we're in a situation where we're recruiting for another person to fill that role, and Chief Chadwick is fulfilling that role now, and I'm doing a great job, I think. But I think we need a dedicated person to deal with that.
I want to move to the next one because there are four parts to this, and it's my fault that you didn't understand that first part. What will you do to ensure the city's cooperation with the air district to fulfill the district's commitment in a reasonable timeframe to fund and establish and operate a community-based air monitoring station in Benicia for public benefit?
So part of the agreement was, and it wasn't really part of this agreement, but the air district on its own in refinery cities had agreed to put in and pay for a independent air monitoring system, which was really something that was going to be housed in a trailer. And they suggested that the best place to do that would be Robert Simple School, which is the closest location to the refinery. I didn't think that was necessarily the best place because there's already a whole bunch of monitors all around the refinery. The district itself said it shouldn't be close to sources of pollution like freeways. Well, Robert Simple's pretty close to 780. Well, Robert Simple's pretty close to 780. And then, but the, but the real problem was the school district did not want to have it on Robert Simple property. So it falls back on the city to come up with a location and the air district to agree. I think it ought to be in Southampton somewhere. I suggested Community Park or Jack London Park because I think that only is the closest neighborhood to the refinery, but it is also where a lot of these emissions have floated when the wind is going in the wrong direction. And so I don't believe the chief has suggested that he would take some people from the air district around and show them these locations. I don't know where that status is right now, frankly. So I'm a little frustrated that we haven't been able to close the deal on this a year later.
Great. And now the third part of this. Would you consider appointing a council member to attend occasional B-A-Q-M-D board meetings and/or air district committee meetings when agendas include items pertaining to refinery operations, such as emissions reductions, state targets for GHG and carbon emissions reductions, status of fence line air monitoring and reporting, and community-based air monitoring evaluations?
Well, not only that, I would go further than that. I think the county has not necessarily done Benicia a favor in terms of the appointments that they've made to the air district. Slough County gets two appointments. I suggested to Supervisor Brown last year that Mayor Patterson be appointed to the air district by the board. The board did not do that. Instead, they appointed the mayor of Sassoon City. So we have the mayor of Sassoon City and a supervisor from Fairfield representing the county. And no one from Benicia or District Two, which represents Benicia, is part of that group. Contrast that to Contra Costa County, where the mayor of Martinez is a member of the air district and where the supervisor, Joya, who represents those districts, is also on the air district. So I think we're at a disadvantage when issues come up because all we can do is show up, and I would show up. But you're, you're limited to, what, a minute? Or I think it's all the time they give you, and that's not sufficient. So I think the other complaint I have is that when fines are levied against Valero for excess emissions, the city sees none of that money. All of that money stays with the air district. We're the ones suffering the impact. And I don't understand why we should not at least get some of the fiscal relief that is coming with these fines that are being imposed on the refinery.
Thank you very much. Now, this last question deviates. And we ask about the property tax assessment, whether you feel it's fair and what would you do to ensure that it is?
Well, that, this is another unfortunate thing. Valero has appealed their assessment every year. This is a standard business practice that they undertake. Every taxpayer has a right to appeal their assessment, so I'm not saying that they shouldn't or couldn't do that. But the effect is that when they make the appeal, that appeal is usually a very long process. The city receives no money while that appeal is undertaken. And in the last time, the appeal was-
Thirty seconds.
Oh, they asked for, the county said it was worth 900 and some million dollars. Valero argued that it was worth only 100 million dollars. And then they settled at 734 million dollars. But it took over a year for this to happen. So for more than a year, we received not a nickel in property tax. And property tax is the main portion of the receipts that we get from Valero, correct?
Thank you very much. And we will, I will be doing this for each of you, if you prefer. I don't think I would expect you to all remember every part of this question. So Tom Campbell, you're next. So I'll repeat, as an elected official, what actions would you take to ensure that the city Valero Cooperation Agreement's terms are fulfilled for better communication?
Well, actually, it's getting on toward two years. It was February 19th, 2019, which about a year and three quarters down the road. Time flies when you're having fun, I guess, when we actually did this agreement. And I do what I do on everything. I never forget what's going on. So I called up, for example, B Camp a couple of weeks ago and said, "What's going on with the air monitors? What's the Good Neighbor Steering Committee doing with the air monitors?" And I was hoping to have a better response from them. You basically haven't spent much of the $460,000. And all I've done is moved a 20-year-old air monitor over to an area next to the refinery. That's not where I want to find community air monitors. Same problem as with what's happening with the airport. They haven't produced either. And the school district, why in the world would a school district not want a community air monitor next to a school? That is where you'd exactly want it. And the idea that the freeway makes any difference, it's not that the freeway is part of the air pollution that's produced. And, you know, the other thing about it, the reason these community air monitors are so important in this settlement and they should be in place is because everyone is fixated on Valero. But you've got to remember the air patterns that are going on right now. Our biggest concern is really coming from Ridale and it's coming from Richmond. It's coming from the Phillips 66 and the Chevron plants because we're dead center in the crosshairs of the stuff which comes from there. And they, especially Richmond, has had some very serious incidents. 1999, they had an incident where hundreds of people wound up going to a hospital. So what I do is I remind everybody, and I don't play favorites on what's being done. I expect things to be done after they've been written and put, reduced to writing, as they say right there. So that's what I do. I do it with Valero. I do it with you guys. And I do it with the city. I do it with everybody saying, "What is being done?" And I expect we should be having audits annually. We should be having updates annually. So that's what I do.
Well, I won't respond, but you've brought up some very interesting questions. Would you consider appointing a council member to attend occasional B-A-Q-M-D meetings and/or air district committee meetings that are pertinent to-
I would love to be that council member. Everyone seems to have forgotten, we had a study session about a year and a quarter ago where the air board came in. And I, I asked them some very basic questions about what are they doing? Why isn't there an air monitor in the city? And when are you going to put one in? And so I would love to be able to continue to ask those kind of questions. I like to make people uncomfortable when they don't produce results. And so I would love to be going to one of those things representing the city.
Okay, what would you do to ensure that Valero is properly assessed, their property tax?
Well, what we did the first time around when, you know, Steve Young was just talking about it and they said, "Well, we think we're worth maybe 150 million dollars," you know, is we were part of the county's lawsuit that was brought and spent years on trying to come up with an assessment. And so I, I have no problem doing the same thing. Again, when it comes to Valero, as far as it goes there, the county has the final say, and that is our problem. The county has the final say, but that doesn't mean we can't complain about what is happening. For example, you know, it took several years for the recent $835,000 increase in our property tax to kick in. You know, we also got 1.7 million dollars that was accumulating over the two years before we actually reached the settlement on that. But this is something which is ongoing. There will also be more projects that are done out there, and there will be more disputes. Basically, they're doing what you expect a business to do, say, "We don't think we're paying too much in property tax and we're doing what we're supposed to do." Say, "We think that the property tax should be higher. We need to have a fair assessment." And so that's what I've done before, and that's what I continue to do.
Thank you, Tom. So Trevor? The first question, as an elected official, what actions would you take to ensure that the city and Valero Cooperation Agreement's terms are fulfilled for better, better communication?
Yes, I think the first thing that we need to make sure that we do is, as Steve had mentioned, is we've got to fill that, that staffing position. And I think that the easiest way to try to have accountability around that is make sure that we, at every city council meeting, have an update from our department heads relating to the status of existing outstanding staffing and hiring needs by each department. And furthermore, I think what we need to do is set a performance metric to identify by which time we feel it's unacceptable that we haven't at least interviewed or sourced candidates. And if we haven't by that time, we have to enter a new negotiation with the refinery to pay for a private recruiter to try to fill that position. Because the implementation of that piece is going to be critical to our community's communication with our civic leadership in the refinery as well. I think the chief's doing a great job right now, but obviously he's got other things to do as well. So I think that's an easy way that we could try to solve that problem.
Great. What will you do to ensure the city's cooperation with the air district to fulfill the district's commitment to get a community-based air monitoring station set up in our town?
Well, as you know, when, when we bolstered on the community advisory panel, we went through this process of having the district come talk to us and explain the rationale and methodology of why they tried to identify that particular location and get the understanding of how the predicted, you know, Gaussian dispersion modeling would impact our community relative to the wind directions. And, you know, the part that I never really felt too comfortable with was that selection protocol and only that, right? I think it should have been a phased program. If the community had raised a concern saying that we want additional monitors, I think we can have a conversation about, okay, so we're agreeing to this one initially, but if you're going to phase it out, where would they go? And what additional benefit would you get from those monitors? Because I think that that's a piece that's missing from understanding how that data will play into decision-making. To the point related to the school district, I actually had a conversation with some of the folks that sit on the, the school district's board and trying to understand why this is not happening. And it's as simple as the fact that the school district doesn't want it on the property because they have a planned CIP project in the location which it's been identified to go. And so you have, again, a fall down in communication between our existing civic structure to where the city council isn't talking to the district. And we thought we had the problem solved, and then we come to actually try to implement it. We're trying to put an improvement where they're already planning something for their particular campus expansion.
Very good. Would you consider appointing someone from the council to attend B-A-Q-M-D meetings and/or those stationary source committee meetings that have to do with refinery performance, et cetera?
Absolutely. I think, you know, having any educated mind that's actually in the room that can represent our community's interests is absolutely what we need. As Steve had mentioned, the representatives that are currently on Backmo's board have a different perception of what particular challenges may be. And I would also add that there's other, you know, our, our neighboring city of Vallejo has actually been identified as part of the Plan Bay Area Resiliency Effort and Plan, one Plan Bay Area as a community that is disproportionately impacted relative to demo, to racial demographics and income as well. And so I would actually advocate that our neighbors probably have more of a, a say to say that they should sit at that table than we do as we have studies that show that they're actually getting more disproportionately impacted from such upwind refineries as Mr. Campbell had mentioned.
Thank you. What will you do to ensure that Valero is properly and fairly assessed?
Yeah, so I had to go look this one up too, and kind of that procedural process. So what I did learn about it is, so this is kind of where the Board of Equalization comes in. And they actually have a guidance document, which needs to get implemented by each one of the county assessors. And that county assessor has to use this guiding document for petroleum facilities. And I guess that there's a specific methodology in which they have to actually appraise that. And in that document, there's a improvement in a reduction scheme calculation, depending upon what types of improvements have taken place over time. So as a city representative, what I would want to do is work with the county to make sure that we can at least backcheck their assumptions and how they're implementing that implementation methodology. And hopefully, we can try to work amicably to try to make sure it's a reasonable amount of money. Obviously, as Tom and Steve have mentioned, it's a big sticking point because it becomes a lot of money at the end of the day related to the assessment. If push comes to shove, you know, we've got to have conversations with the refinery. And if we have to go to lawsuit, then we've got to go to lawsuit.
Thank you. Now we have Terry.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the original question. As an elected official, what actions would you take to ensure the city and Valero Cooperation Agreement's terms are fulfilled? I think that we're going to have new, obviously, we're going to have a new council. We're going to have a new mayor. We have the opportunity to hit the reset button. I don't think that we have to wait until there's another emergency to react quickly to understanding how we can partner better with Valero. I think that what we need to do is we need to start a different kind and different level of communications. That I think part of the issue that we've been having over the last number of years is there's a failure, as they say in the movie, a failure to communicate. So I think that we need to be very firm and very understanding with them to understand how we can communicate better. I hate using the letters, but I think that the ISO brought us to the cooperation agreement. I'm not saying that we need one now, but I also think that we need to make it clear that we understand if there is a failure down the road, that that is a tool that we are willing to go and look at. So from an understanding of what will it take to continue to make the agreement positive, I think we need to understand how we can understand emergency preparedness, communications, coordination. It allows us to enhance our responses for accidental releases. We, in a, as both Trevor and as Steve pointed out, we need to get the position filled at the fire department for the liaison role. And I think that we also need to suggest, and I'm suggesting that the public information bank, the website that people can go to, that possibly could have the purple air on there, needs to be enhanced. I found it very difficult to click through the areas in the city to be able to find the public information website bank. And so I think that these are the things that I, I believe that from a new city council member I would be looking at is collaboration, cooperation, getting prepared early in the process.
Thank you. What will you do to ensure that the city's cooperation with the air district to fulfill the district's commitment in a reasonable timeframe to wholly fund, locate, establish, and operate a community-based monitoring station in our neighborhood?
Well, first off, I found it, I think Trevor made the point or Tommy made the point. I can't believe that the school district did not want that site. I understand that there were issues, but nonetheless, I would think that you'd want to have as much protection and understanding on that site. So I, I understand also that the city staff is working on an alternate site and they're going to be coming back with a recommendation on the next site. I am deeply concerned that the, the county representative is not obviously a Benicia resident, but that he has never been to city council. He is not, Mr. Spurling has not suggested a contact with the community. He doesn't understand what is happening here. I think that we really need to ratchet up our communications and our outreach on a semi-annual or a quarterly basis to be able to talk to them and say, "How do we get better representation on to that monitoring board to make sure that we have a key person that understands what is happening in a refinery town?"
Thank you. Would you, and on that note, would you consider, I guess you've answered that question.
No, I'd like to answer that question.
Yeah, would you consider having a council appointee to the district board meetings, you know, as an attendee and/or to the air, air board's stationary source committee meetings?
Yes, I think there should be one dedicated city council member that is appointed to the board. But in addition to that, I think we should have a rotating member of city council so that every one of the city council members gets access to and sees what is happening so that they have firsthand knowledge so that two-fifths of, of the council has direct understanding at any given time of what is happening at the B-A-A-Q-M-D.
Thank you. And now the last part. What would you do to ensure that Valero pays its fair share of property tax?
Yeah, as-
And is fairly assessed.
Yes, I'm sorry. As Trevor pointed out, there is a Board of Equalization that we can appeal. I think that one of the things hap, has to happen is that, getting back to my first answer of the reset button, is I think the reason why they continue, they being Valero, continue every year to try to get a reassessment is that there's a conflict between the city and Valero. and Valero. I think if we can eliminate that conflict and they want to be a good neighbor and fulfill their financial obligation, we depend on those finances. I think that as a reset with the new council, new mayor, that this is an opportunity for us to be sitting at that table and talking to them and having them understand that with the improvements that they've made on the property, the continual improvements that they make on that property, that we should be and they should be taxed at a fair property tax.
Thank you. Okay, and so Christina.
Hello.
You may remember all these questions as a result.
You know, I have it printed right
You have it in front of you, okay.
Yeah, I can just take it from there. Thanks, Marilyn. So as an elected official, what actions would I take to ensure that the city Valero's cooperation agreement terms are fulfilled? That is a primary responsibility of the city council. We have been asking and receiving updates from Valero. We have our cap, which has gotten much more active in the last year and a half. And also, the improvements with our fire chief and his work with Valero. It's significant to understand that relationship. We share a lot of responsibilities with Valero. Valero has, a fire department has assisted in many emergencies and responses, and we've got to keep that part going. So it gets back to communication and also developing some trust. The trust on both ends has deteriorated. We're trying to rebuild that. So I'm looking for much better and continued continuation of that trust. The second question is, what would you do to ensure a city's cooperation with the air district to fulfill the district's commitment about the air monitoring? Steve Young and I sit on the Liaison Committee between the council and the school district. We were invited to come in July to discuss the placement at Robert Semple. And the superintendent, along with principal, teachers were there as long, as, as well as the trustees. They seemed blindsided by this. And there may have been discussions with the superintendent, but this type of thing should not have gone that far down the road without better communication with our school district. There were a number of reasons. Trevor mentioned that they had a planned project for that, but they were also concerned about the size of it. Would it be fenced off? Could the kids get on top of it? There are a lot of things that, you know, we might not think about. And obviously, the air district did not think about be, until you actually sit down with the people that it's going to impact. So luckily, our chief Chadwick was there. He said that, you know, we can definitely look at other locations. He and his team are already doing that. But he also, in a memo he, he sent to Constance not too long ago, it's up to the air district to make the decision where, so, and to find that acceptable site. He's doing a great job in figuring out, and, but that has been the delay, and the delay to me was up to the air quality district and communicating, and I'm not sure who they were communicating with the city to figure out where the location is going to be. As Councilmember Young said, there might be better locations, and I'm, I'm waiting for Chief Chadwick, who it sounds like is very close to determining that site for us. We need to get it up, we need to get it running. And as Tom Campbell said, we need the Good Neighbor Steering Committee air monitor to get going. You know, that, there is four hundred and some thousand, almost half a million dollars there. And I know now that you have your nonprofit, I think that that is very important. And we need to have an update on where that is, you know, again, for our community and understanding the development of the, the air monitoring. As far as, would I appoint a council member to attend the board meetings? Of course. You know, we sit on the, the city council members sit on a range of different regional commissions and boards, like the Water, Soltrans, M C E, A B A G. And this is, would be another appointment, another opportunity for having representation. Benicia has to and needs to have representative, representation. And you have to also have a very good relationship with the county representatives. And that is a very important part of getting these things done. The last thing is, what we do to ensure Valero's property properly and fairly assessed? Well, as far as I know, there have not been an appeal for several years from Valero on their property taxes. I may be wrong about that, but I believe that that is the truth. And the last time was during the recession. And this was when property values throughout our city and elsewhere during the meltdown experienced a decline in their property values. So they are a business. We expect them to, you know, pull their fair share. And I believe that if we look at the records, the, their appeal did not, was not warranted. They didn't win that appeal, and we were able to get close to that million dollars. But it does cause issues with our budget and our finances because we put that money aside. We don't think that we have it until that appeal has been ruled on. So it does create an impact to our budget. And right now, as we all are experiencing COVID and our businesses are responding to COVID, I think that we're lucky that property values have not decreased in our town.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, topic, and you just survived, all of you, four questions, you know, a, a long set of questions, and this will be a little bit easier. Topic area three. The air district's Regulation 12 Rule 15 required approved real-time fence line monitoring systems at all Bay Area refineries with reliable public reporting of raw data in real time. And we want to know about the status of Valero's compliance. So here are the questions. And we'll start with Tom Campbell. Good science requires independent validation of data. Under the City of Benicia Valero Cooperation Agreement, will you commit to asking for independent validation of raw data collected from fence line monitoring systems and for access to archive data for independent third-party review? And, this is part two, what would you do to ensure that the amended settlement agreement's requirement for installing a fourth fence line pathway system on the northwest side of the refinery facing Southampton neighborhoods is accomplished and that the system is reliably, reliably operating?
Time to start?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. Well, of those seven college degrees, I have five of them on the basic sciences and life sciences. And the first two were a bachelor's and master's degree in chemistry from the University of California. So this is something I know really well, because this is what I did when I was chemist. And this is what you have to do. When you're trying to decide whether raw data is good or not, the basic underlying problem you have to have is, is the calibration of the equipment correct? So what you have to do is, every year, you have to have someone go in there and see if, in fact, the raw data you're getting is coming from a properly calibrated piece of equipment. If it is, then the data we're getting is data which can be read by just about anybody. And that's, just by looking at the data you get, it tells you what percent of the air had, say, benzene in it. Well, that's, that's something, as long as you know that the piece of machinery you're using is giving you the right number, you can tell right there, and you can go to a table and you can say it's above it or below it. So the issue is not really independence as far as, you know, looking at the raw data, it's independence as far as looking at the machinery that's working. And yes, I think there should be, you know, every year, someone going out, checking, make sure the machinery is working properly. That generally would be something that the air district would do. So that being the case, you know, I have no problem with that at all. It's just, you have to remember what you're looking for. It's not, is the raw data correct in and of itself, it's, is the machinery that's producing the raw data that is working properly?
You raise a good point that could be discussed with some experts, yes. Also, what would you do to ensure that the amended settlement agreement's requirement for installing the fourth fence line that was part of the agreement, the amended agreement is accomplished and that the system is reliably operating, installed and operating?
Well, you have to stay after both Valero and also the air district. What apparently has happened was the, just what I was saying, the technology is not there yet to identify hydrogen sulfide in the low enough levels that, you know, they're asking for. I guess the problem probably is the UV absorption spectroscopy that's used to do it, you know, can't differentiate between ambient hydrogen sulfide and sulfide coming from the refiner. The air district has said, okay, everything's on
Thirty seconds.
Until we have that capability. So they put it out to 2021. The thing you can't do is let it just sort of slip into, you know, the background. You have to stay on it. Where are we? When are we going to have this, you know, capability? And once you have the capability, then you put in the, the fourth, you know, line of line monitors.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Trevor, do you want me to read the question again, or you have it in front of you? Good science requires independent validation.
I got it in front of me. Yeah, so the one thing that I just wanted to point out is that the, the point in which we're at related to rule development and regulation is just to frame a reference of like beta testing the first Prius versus being today and the advantages of Tesla. The, the rule regulation and formulation of development was well, well-intentioned, but the industry has to catch up with a level of technology to support that particular regulation. As Tom had mentioned, there was a company of Oregon which was originally identified to come up with the technology to actually get a confidence interval related to the reporting. And if we can't get that, unfortunately, that's going to be the, the hinge pin in everybody's want to understand what the fence line program is going to do. I absolutely think that I'm confident that we can, and hopefully it'll happen before, you know, 2021, because I think it should. But if you look in the air quality fence line monitoring plan that Backmud approved, there's actually a sub-chapter related to quality. And in it, it says, all actions will be documented in the data management system and required to retain raw data with traceability of all actions that result in the final data. So the DMS system actually has to track whether there's modifications or not. And I absolutely think that we need to have a third-party vendor verify that. And I think that the city and the Good Neighbor Steering Committee should be part of that decision-making panel, because oftentimes, you know, that's going to be an outside consultant that's going to be verifying that data to make sure that the numbers don't change. So I absolutely would support that. The, the second piece about the fourth pathway. So the fourth pathway and implementation, unfortunately, if we want to see that happen, it has to go into the fence line monitoring plan. Because that's going to be the pushing, the, you know, the push and pull that we're going to go back and forth with the refinery on is if we want four, but the plan says three, then they're only actually required to implement three because that's what the regulator who controls the resources telling them that they need to do. So what we need to do is, in the event that we have to reopen the plan, have a conversation around how we can accommodate the fourth fence line into that implementation of the plan. And I guess furthermore, before we do that, I just want to make sure that the the technology piece associated with how we're actually going to be collecting that data works before we just jump to adding it in another source.
I do have to clarify one thing, though. It was part of the settlement agreement, the amended settlement agreement agreed to by the city Valero and the Good Neighbor in 2019. And so that expectation, and Valero was quite willing to add that and was, you know. So I think it is something we can add, that we expect compliance on, according to the agreement. Okay, thank you. Terry Scott?
Thank you. Well, I don't have seven degrees. And I, but I believe everything that Tom Campbell said about calibration, machinery calibration. I kind of would put it into the world of Mark Twain. There are lies, there are great lies, and then there are statistics. So you can do anything with the data. I think we need to have third-party, independent third-party analysis of all the data clearly, which is clearly spelled out in the cooperation agreement. In addition to that, I think in the agreement, it clearly spelled out that there was going to be in the Second Amendment a relationship between the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program as well as the Good Neighbor Steering Committee to advance the opportunity for the collection of the raw data. And then for an independent third party to look at it, and that's why Valero had provided the funds in order to move forward with that. So I, I think that this, this dispute is, as I looked at all the information that's online, goes back to 2015 with the B double A and Q D, and the refineries understanding what is the minimal detection of H2S. And these are things that I'm trying to get my head around, so I apologize if I misspeak. But understanding what those levels are and how to detect those levels are very difficult. So yes, I agree with the collection and the validation of that raw data. And two, I understand that we have to have the right kind of tools and technology that'll advance to, to make sure that the information that we get is calibrated properly across all of the monitors.
Thank you. Christina?
Thanks. So I don't have seven degrees either, but I believe that, you know, that's what's pretty incredible about the makeup of our city council and the expertise of a lot of you with the Good Neighbor Steering Committee and also with the Bay Area Quality Management. Also, in a, in the same letter that Chief Chadwick wrote, Constance, it was talking about as far as the implementation and the ability to, for technology to be ready. So we maybe are ahead of ourselves, but I think that technology obviously is catching up. We're, we're dealing with a lot of parties here. As I recall back when the Good Neighbor Steering Committee and they had the air monitor equipment and the trailer, there was just a lot of concern then about who would read the data and then also get it communicated to the public. And how you can do that in a unbiased way, not to create panic or to make it true. So I think that whatever we do moving forward, we need to have an outside third party that can help us through this process. And as I say, it, it sounds as if the technology is, is still not there yet. So I, I rely on, you know, again, research and the, the experts. So, and is there a second part to that? Yeah.
The second part is about getting the installation or compliance with Valero for the fourth fence line.
And again, that gets back to what I just said, as far as the Bay Area Quality Management, air quality. Their reluctance, it sounds like, they've shown an understanding of the complex challenges of open path H25 air monitoring. And so this new technology has not been previously used. So the implementation of this technology has challenges with data accuracy and ambient atmosphere interferences. So I think that the more we come to understand this and partner with the Bay Area Quality Management and with our brilliant council members, that, and, and also you, that will help us in capturing this information. And, you know, I'm, I'm the normal citizen out there. So we need to make it easy to understand. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Steve Young? Steve Young?
Okay. So the, let me do the second part first, if I could. What is it going to take to get the, the fence line monitoring installed? I also am not a chemist, and I don't understand why this is being held up because it can't read, the instrumentation is not advanced enough to read one particular gas or emission, hydrogen sulfide. Maybe Tom can explain it, or Marilyn can, but why couldn't the instruments be installed now, even if they didn't, even if they weren't measuring one particular gas? I think there's a value in measuring all the other emissions that are coming off the refinery. The other thing I think I, the other point I want to make is Marilyn said, this is something that they agreed to, that Valero agreed to as part of the agreement. And what I remember from those discussions is that Tom said that if this didn't happen, he was willing to change his vote and to vote for an ISO. He can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that was my, that's my recollection. And if both he and I are on the council in January, this may be a topic that we need to bring up again. I think it was the threat of an ISO that brought everybody to the table. And it's, we could use that again as a reason to push the agreement to actually be implemented. In terms of having a, a third-party verifier, if this, if these readings are happening in real time, and they are on the internet and available to anybody to see, and they are, it's the same stuff that the air district is reading, I think the way to do it is to have the Good Neighbor Steering Committee monitoring system up and running and be a second way to validate the numbers that we're seeing coming off of Valero. I trust that they would not mess with the numbers. I don't think that they have any reason to, but I think this kind of validation, ratification of the numbers would be an important thing to have. And I don't know, I may have forgot the first part of the question.
I think you've answered both.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, topic area four, and we're going to start with Trevor. The topic area is about Valero's and the Port of Benicia's contributions to greenhouse gases and toxic emissions, and the status of the reductions of those emissions to date, and the City of Benicia's Climate Action Plan, which, in my opinion, this is to add one little tidbit here, needs updating. And so I'll get to the question. The public has a right to know the current level of greenhouse gas emissions and reductions achieved by Valero and the Port of Benicia. As called for under the Climate Action Plan, what will you do to encourage further emissions reductions, including greenhouse gases, at the Valero refinery, including its port terminal operations and asphalt plant, as well as to encourage reduction of emissions resulting from import shipping activity at the Port of Benicia?
Yeah, so this is a great question that I want to start off with. I agree that obviously as part of the Climate Action Plan, you develop something called an emissions inventory. But the problem with that is that, you know, data is only as good as when you collect it. And so the data that was collected as part of the greenhouse gas emission inventory goes back to like 2014, I think, is when it was actually finalized. And in that table, there's a table in that document which identifies the sources that you specifically reference. And it, they roll the units into CO2 equivalents, because the, all different type of sources put off different types of greenhouse gases, right? So you try to neutralize the unit type by using CO2 equivalent. And, but you can actually look up on the EPA's website through the mandatory rule reporting process, the particular reported CO2 equivalent. And I did that for the refinery, because I know that the last time that we had talked to you, it asked for that. So the Valero refinery in, in 2018 is the number that's in the EPA system, reported 1,945,637 metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And through that process, when they submit that through the EPA, actually, the California Air Board verifies that number. Now, if we want to break that down related to the asphalt plant that's actually there, we would have to work with the refinery to determine what the allocation of those use types are. Furthermore, I couldn't find imports in the system, because it's a different reporting. But I will absolutely try to track that down so that we can try to identify how much CO2 equivalent they have. But the, the only way that we're going to be able to get the level of detail that you're wanting and accountability is making sure that, just like we do with our, our general plan and implementation of staffing priorities, is use the Climate Action Plan as a tool to have progression over time and have staff report to us what measures we feel have actually been implemented to reduce the emissions goals set in that plan. And I think that that's one way, not only for the planning commission, but also the city council, to hold accountability in the implementation of the cap.
Thank you. You're, you're finished?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, we are with Terry.
I too took a look at the CAP and the emissions inventory, and it indicated that approximately, and this is that old data before Trevor was able to bring that to us, that 20% of all the emissions, CO2 emissions, was attributed to Valero and to the Port of Benicia, which are regulated by state and federal agencies. I think that what we need to do is we need to sit down and talk to both Valero and to imports and see what can we do to encourage the use of additional kinds of electric vehicles to move around the plant, more efficiencies within the office structure, more collaboration and cooperation as far as streamlining some of the filters that they are using. Valero has a very active capital improvements program that, that does regular replacement of inefficient equipment to, to maintain some new efficiencies out of that. I think that we need to be able to coordinate with them and also develop on the city side, utilize the former climate advisory director, if, if we had that, if I recall, someone to be as a liaison with them to understand what is being emitted into the air and how that can be measured. In addition to that, I think that we need to be working and encouraging Valero to create onsite energy. They have a large tract of land there. If they can start generating more of their electricity, they won't be using electricity that has lost them on the power lines going through that, so that downstream, the plants that are generating the energy that they're using are not putting more CO2 into the environment.
Christina?
Thank you. So the public obviously has a right to know the current level of GHG emissions and reductions achieved by Valero and the Port of Benicia. One of the things that I think is, is really important that we were able to accomplish a few years ago is creating a business resource investment program. It's an award-winning program to help our businesses become much more efficient, energy efficient. And it helped them not only reduce their carbon emissions, but it also helped them save money. So I think that this, this plan program needs to be implemented. Climate action coordinator working with economic development. We had a wonderful climate action coordinator in Alex Porteau. I always got her last name, kind of, I just always called her Alex. But she was ahead of her time, and we were so fortunate that she spent a few years with us. But she kind of set the model as to what things we can accomplish by, and I, this goes back to Constance Gutelle. She always talked about sustainability and economic development. Those two things need to work hand in hand. We all know that we have a big financial revenue source in, in Valero. We are trying to figure out ways of maximizing things with imports financially, but it, it, we, we need to figure out how to make them and, and give them incentives on how to become much more efficient with their carbon emissions. And this goes for all of our businesses in town. So as I say, I'd like to see much more of a collaboration with economic development and our sustainability. And I'm very excited about our Sustainability Commission. It's going to, it's back in, in order. We have a lot of new folks that have been appointed recently. Very impressive, the people that are now wanting to serve on boards and commissions, especially sustainability. So I'm looking forward to some things that are going to be happening in, in 2021 when it comes to working those two things together. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, Steve Young?
Yeah, I'm not sure I would agree that Valero needs incentives from the city in order to reduce greenhouse gases, if that's what I heard. The issue of greenhouse gases are really, is regulated by the state, it's regulated by the air district. I think the ability of the city to impact or regulate the actual emissions of greenhouse gases is somewhat limited. However, I think there is something we can do with imports. One of the things that I learned about when I was on the planning commission and dealing with crude by rail proposal, and I read all of those documents, and part of the argument that was being made at the time was that moving oil by rail was actually environmentally superior to bringing it in by ship. And so there was a number of studies that were included that had to do with the greenhouse gases that were admitted by oil tankers. And one of the realities is that there is a lot of GHG that's emitted by oil tankers, but it's not really measurable, because it's happening out at sea. And by the time the tankers get into port and tie up at the dock at imports, it's hard to measure what they're doing, except for the fact that they may, and I don't know that this is in fact the case, but if it is, it's something that the city ought to advance, the idea that they are leaving those ships idly. They are not turning them off. There has got to be a tremendous amount of GHG being released while those ships are in port. And I think we, the city ought to look at some kind of a ordinance perhaps that requires them to power down to the level that is just minimal needed to complete the offloading. And I think that alone might be a way to improve our GHG admission situation, at least at imports.
That sounds good. We have Tom Campbell next.
First, I wanted to say, damn you, Steve Young, damn you. You know, that was exactly what I wanted to talk about, you know, was, you know, every time, you know, you, you bring up tankers in imports, the next line coming from the other side is, well, we've got the commerce clause, the export, import clause, don't go near us. And so the problem is, those tankers are really dirty. And what actually Steve was talking about is one of the reasons they get away with it. They're out at sea all the time, so, you know, the tankers are stealing all this stuff out, but it's picked up by the air and by the ocean. And so they say, well, so what if we're dirty? You know, that's just life. You know, what do you expect us to do, become nuclear powered or something? But if you think about it, this is the problem we have out at the port. Valero, the refinery, it's got monitors everywhere, fence line monitors, stack monitors. We do know what's coming out of that plant, but out at the port, there's no monitors, there's no nothing. Who knows which way the wind is blowing, and who knows what's going, you know, out into the community? And one thing you do know is there's a lot of particulate matter, because these are big diesel engines, massive. They fill rooms, they're so big. So this is when I'm going to take another shot at talking about the port tax, because if you want to put monitors out there, who's going to pay for them? And we already know from Valero's monitors that you're talking about millions of dollars to do monitors and to do them right, to do a good monitoring system. But that's the baseline we have to start with. We have to know what's out there right now. And at that point, then, you know, we can start talking about things, but why do you have the engine running when you're in there? I know you have to have it at some level to keep the electricity and everything working, but, you know, what is the minimal level? And, you know, we have to have a baseline of what is being spewed out in that port. Once we have that, then we can go back and say, you have to reduce this number. And then we can start to go to our elected officials like, you know, Congressman Thompson and say, this is what's going on, this is what's going on in every single port, we just haven't seen one of the ports, why don't you do something to reduce the emissions out there? So this, this is where we need to go. We need to start with a baseline, but to do that baseline, you have to have the monitors, and someone has to pay for those really expensive monitors. So that's my approach on it, as far as it goes. Out there right now, no one knows what's coming in, but I'll bet you that if you actually were able to check the particulate production out in those giant tankers, you would find that an awful lot of the particulate matter, it's that little brown dust, that little black dust.
Thirty seconds.
All over, you know, your house outside is coming from those tankers right there.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to area five now, which I think is a very important topic area, because it deals with our future and global warming, and what we can do about it locally, in our own, you know, bailiwick, and, and through our, what we can do through our council and advocacy. So this is the topic area, Perspectives on Current Changing Operating Conditions Among Bay Area Refiners, The Future of Valero Refinery in Benicia, State of California Climate Goals to Achieve Drastic GHG Reductions by 2050 to Bring About a Net Zero Carbon Economy, and the City of Benicia's Response to a Recently Published Research Report Titled, Decommissioning California Refineries: Climate and Health Paths in an Oil, in an Oil State, a Communities for a Better Environment Report Dated July 2020, brand new, which Proposes Annually Phased Reductions at Approximately 5% in Refinery Production Capacity to Meet State Climate Goals. So the question is, Valero's stated intention is to be the last man standing among Bay Area, Bay Area refineries. Valero is committed to processing dirtier crude oil slates for gasoline, jet fuel, and other products. What is your current level of concern about global warming and for reducing refinery emissions, including GHG, in relation to state targets to slow global warming and create a zero-carbon economy by 2050? It's a big question. Terry Scott first.
All right. Well, first off, there's no doubt in my mind that Valero will continue to operate the Benicia refinery as long as it is a profitable business and can operate within environmental, right, in an environmentally regulated world. Given that, we have to understand how we can partner together in order to solve some of these issues. We still drive, we still need our streets asphalted, we still use plastic bottles for ketchup and shampoo, et cetera. So this is the reality that we have to live with. So at this point, we have the symbiotic relationship that began back in the mid-sixties as the Humboldt Refinery came into being. So we can't rewrite history. We have to look at how we look forward, as you pointed out, Marilyn. How do we rewrite legislation that continues to address safety and public concerns? I'm deeply concerned about global warming. It continues at a rapid pace. It is an undisputed scientific fact. We need to understand how fast that it is happening, so that we can find tools to measure it quickly. And as Tom pointed out, get that, that diesel material that is kind of left out there and be able to measure that, that's coming into the house that I have to clean every day. We have to establish more community, committee, committees on the council and be a partner with Valero and with imports. And we have to have our regulators that are watching us, watching them. As far as zero carbon for 2050. So I, I Googled this, and I found a couple of really interesting sites, and I went to the World Economic Forum that states a zero-carbon 2050 is possible due in large part to the collapsing cost of renewable energy, which is one of the things that this council approved, the solar farm. Most sectors of the economy, they know, can be decarbonized in 10 years. However, the so-called harder-to-abate sectors, such as refineries, will be difficult to achieve a reduction will be difficult to achieve a reduction in greenhouse gas as well as zero carbon as high costs are involved and we have not discovered any of the technologies that we will need in order to be able to, to deal with that. In order to have a carbon zero refinery, we're going to need to have a forceful public policy. We're going to need to have new investment, strong regulatory and industry leadership. As a council member, I think, and why we're here and we're all debating this, what will I do? I will be there to listen and be there to understand. I think one of the things that this whole evening was about, was about the council members and the mayoral candidates to understand what we don't know and how we can learn. And this is the process that will enable me to learn more so that I could be an effective member of the governmental council.
Thank you very much. Christina.
Thanks. So again, you'd have to be a real fool not to believe in global warming, especially living in California and seeing all of the devastation with the wildfires, sea level rise. It's, it's coming, it's coming fast. We need to do as much as we possibly can as a city to set example. Recently, the city council had made a resolution, passed a resolution of a, that we are in a climate emergency. I was one of the people that voted for the solar farm that was just passed recently. I'm a big believer in conservation, water conservation. This city has shown the rest of the state that we know how to conserve water. But we need to do this as a team effort. And I go back to council member Young saying that he doesn't think it's important to give incentives to Valero. I'm not talking about financial incentives. I'm talking about making it the most, the most efficient, the least carbon emission emitting refinery in the world. We need to give them that goal. And we need to work with them with how this is going to be accomplished in 20, in the, in the next 30 years. It can be done. Other industries are embracing this. So we need to think outside the box. We need to think big. And I believe that this is the time to do it. We've got to put this constant conflict away. We have to figure out trust and we have to move forward with a big idea and a big response to how we get through climate, climate change. And, and, you know, we have to do this for our future, not just for us, but our, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Young.
Thanks. So the, it was the old phrase from back in the 60s that I remember was the, when talking about the environment was think globally, act locally. And so I think it's really, the question is, what can we do locally that will have an impact on our own particular living situation and the environment? What the state goals that they have implemented, they are very ambitious, but they're necessary. If we're really going to meet these climate goals by 2035 for all electric vehicles, 2050 for zero carbon, there's going to have to be lots of changes that are implemented. But as Terry said, we are not, we don't have this infrastructure to support a hundred percent electric vehicle fleet at this point. Hopefully, we're going to move towards that. The fact that two of the five refineries in the Bay Area have closed is a sort of a dual edged sword. It's, it's good for Valero in the sense that there's less competition. But it may also incentivize them to to produce as much as they can, as fast as they can, which will of course have environmental impacts as well. If, I think the city is somewhat limited, to be honest, in how we can impact Valero's reduction of GHG. Even if we had a ISO, I don't think any ISO, including the ones that exist in Contra Costa now, are able to directly impact that question. These are regulations that come down from the state and that are implemented by the air district. And I'm not sure the city has a role in overlapping what is currently being done. If however, Valero comes forward in the next couple of years with a, with a project that's going to require city approvals or a process change that would require city approvals, then I think it's appropriate to sit down with them and ask about their operations and what can be done to to limit their, their GHD production. They're a relatively clean refinery as refineries go. I think we should recognize that. I made the proposal that the council adopted to shift to an all electric vehicle fleet to the extent possible. And so now when the city looks to replace vehicles, they're supposed to first look at the possibility of going electric before they come back and go to a traditional vehicle. And
Thirty seconds.
The, the issue that Christina raised earlier of water sustainability, I know it's not the topic of this particular webinar, but I think there are things that the city can do to establish water security going forward and with climate change and the increasing droughts that we're going to face. I think it's something we need to be talking about.
Okay, just a couple of quick comments about Benicia, the refinery in Valero. And that's because I've heard over and over again, you know, well, these refineries are closing, you know, Valero is, you know, about to have a death knell on its own. And they actually have had two refineries that they have closed in Aruba and in Delaware. And the reason they closed those is because the infrastructure was falling apart. Well, the refinery in Valero, the Valero owns, is the newest refinery in California, 1968. That shows you how often you get a refinery built there. And when you think about it, they've also done two major multimillion dollar projects, actually it's over a billion dollars. So it's not real likely that Benicia is going to have the third closure there. And another point in their favor, 10 years ago, they did a wet gas scrubber. And they spent $750 million on that. And Contra Costa County has started to, you know, make rumblings that they want the refineries in Contra Costa County to do an equivalent, you know, wet gas scrubber. And 10 years ago, it was three quarters of a billion dollars. So you can imagine what it is now. And when you have refineries that are starting to back off on production as it is, Valero is in a really good spot. So it's not going away. But I wanted to talk a little bit about global warming because this is my favorite subject. I actually want to, because I like numbers, want to quote the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. It's an organization sort of connected with the UN, 37 countries belong to it. US still belongs to it too. And they have these projections on, you know, what the parts per million of CO2 is going to be over the coming years. I guess it's calculated, you know, the highest number is in May in the northern hemisphere and it's a Manoa Kia Observatory. That is the point they decided on. And it was supposed to go no higher than 350 parts per million. This year, it was 417 parts per million on average in the month of May. That's the important number there. And when it gets to 450 parts per million, there's a 50 50 chance that we will have gone over the edge. That we will be at two to three degrees increase in our global temperature. And that's the point where we have trouble. Well, what they did is they said, this organization said, under our present
Thirty seconds.
our present, you know, production of CO2, we will be at 685 parts per million by 2050. That means that being neutral in 2050 is not going to work. We have to be neutral decades before that. Otherwise, at 685 parts per million, that's over eight degrees increase in the global temperature and we will have gone over the tripping point where there is no return. And like it or not, those are the scary thoughts we have right here. So we have to hit that number of neutral carbon decades before 2050, or it's really all over for the human race. Deal with it any way you want. Those are, those are the statistics that really are out there.
Thank you, Tom. Trevor.
Yeah, so I'm going to kind of try to pick up on climate science after the reporting of change, right? So I think that the idea around climate science and how it applies to California is important to our community. So if you start with the fact that climate change is real and global warming will oftentimes in, is projected to result in sea level rise, the biggest challenge that we have for our community is actually how that sea level rise will interact with our community. Now, in, you know, over the past, you know, few decades, we've risen about eight inches or so. But by the end of the century, we're looking between 20 and 55 inches. And I was actually just presenting on community adaptation to sea level rise to the association of the American Civil Engineering Association of the Bay Area on how communities can adapt. And our biggest threat, because the majority of our population in California was within, you know, close distance to the water, is that it puts about $100 billion worth of property and infrastructure at exposure risk. And we're not, we're no different. Our wastewater treatment plant and the surrounding energy and roadway infrastructure, which is critical to our community, is actually at the highest risk level when identified by the state. The, the idea that the refinery's air quality emissions are tied to that is absolutely true. I'm not going to try to dismiss that. But I think that the point that Tom made about kind of their position in the marketplace is an interesting one. The only thing that I would add in addition to that is that I do think that we're probably going to see other refineries in the state of California close. Do I feel that it's going to be Valero? No. Similarly, for the same reasons that Tom mentioned in that it's the newest refinery within the state. And because of that, it is also one of the safest. We've actually seen a consolidation trend within the oil and gas industry over the last decade or so. And actually, if the closest one is our neighbor across the way in Martinez, the old Shell refinery, and I think it's some hedge fund or PBF or something bought them. And I would say that that in itself is probably going to be the next one that will, will likely close. So do I think that our community is in a stable position related to our refinery as an operator? Yes. Would I like to see them continue to put infrastructure investments in place that will allow them to reduce their greenhouse gas and emission footprint? Absolutely. The, you know, 10-year-old project of the scrubber was a lot of foresight and how they can exist and operate within the environmental regulations that are in California. And I think if they continue to make those investments, I think that would be great for our community. However, I do want to make sure that my point is taken, that I would rather have a Valero operator than like a hedge fund. Because the hedge fund does not put the safety and security of its constituents and its company. You know, they, they manage a refinery a lot differently. So that's all. Thanks, Marilyn.
Thank you very much. You've all proven that this can be so, it's so educational to have this level of discussion amongst you. And I, I don't think we've ever had that level of focus in this kind of way at a council meet. Well, you wouldn't expect it at a council meeting because of all the rigmarole to get things on an agenda. But I really hope that we'll have more opportunity for public workshops so that people can come to understanding about these things and that you are involved with those levels of discussion would be extraordinary. And in these times with global warming, which we now feel so intimately with these fires where we can't go outside, we can't, we, we are learning something every day about our own tolerance level for what this holds for us if we don't do things to, to address global warming and slow this down. And you've all contributed very important things to the discussion. I, I did hear some things that I could, could have commented on, me personally, from my reading and et cetera. But this just is the beginning. I'm hoping this will be an open opportunity to propose workshops, et cetera, where the public is involved and can come and, and learn more. But you've set the stage and I'm glad that we took this risk in a sense with the Good Neighbor Steering Committee to host this. So I want to thank you very, very much for participating. We've had up to about 58 attendees. And we thank the public for hanging in there on these rather complicated subjects and focused commentary on Valero. And we believe that everyone should vote, you know, those of, those of you who are attending, your vote is so important so that we hear your voice and the counts. I think we're very lucky to have the council slate candidates that are running. I'm, I'm very glad for this. The people running that will have fresh opportunity for these kinds of discussions. I just want to announce that we will be, we've recorded this webinar. It will be available on YouTube. And Constance Butel may try to edit it so that we have the actual webinar as it progressed. And then also each of you with your own responses to these questions. And I would like to figure out a way to get our questions and the background information that we offered out to the public as well. And I'm, I'm sure it's possible. So we're, we did a pretty good job sticking to the time. It's now 8:42. So on that note, I would like to close unless anybody has any questions that you think pertinent to wrap this. Not, not, not any big statement, but if there's any question. And also I just would like to say, since some of you brought up about the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program, B-CAM, and the nonprofit that has been established and what we're doing. And we will very much appreciate being able to tell you about that. We're very excited. It's, it's happening. So with that, I'd like to thank you and say good evening.